Having my initials on that one.
Okay, it is ten o'clock. I'm going to call this Wednesday, June seventh, like twenty twenty-three, Board of Equalization meeting to order. First item is roll call. Mr. Brett Towns.
President.
And I'm Patrick Crowley and I'm here. Notice the meeting was properly hosted. We have four properties before the board today. Are they by phone?
They are all gonna be by phone. It'll all be Wayne Tannenbaum again.
All right. We can get Wayne on the phone. We'll get after that.
Typical Tax Solutions, this is Ashley.
Hi, Ashley. This is Patrick Crowley, Chairman of Board of Equalization in Oklahoma County. Can there is Wayne Tannenbaum available?
Yes, just one moment.
These people in Arizona.
Miss Arizona.
Hello, Todd, this is Wayne.
Wayne, this is Patrick Crowley, Oklahoma County Board of Equalization. We've got a couple of properties or more on the agenda today that you're representing.
Okay.
Uh, first one we have is our number BOE number one fifty-eight. That's account number ending in twenty fifteen. Address is thirteen two twenty Broadway Extension. It's the Bob Howard's Used Cars Chrysler Dodge. The assessor has assessed this property at the same value as last year at six million, seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. And it appears that one of the other of these figures is what you want. Three million, six hundred and fifty thousand or three point five million?
I got a four point seven six one.
Well, it looks like we have a number, uh, four million seven one thousand.
Two seventy-five, right?
Yeah, two seventy-five.
All right, that's four million, what?
Seven, six, one, two, seven, five.
All right. That's, that's what you're asking now is four million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, tell us what you want us to know about this property.
Oh, that's fine. You know, I'd actually like the, the phrasal to go first because that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
No, that's fine. I'll, I'll go.
Not, I mean, I can.
That's fine. No, no, I'll go ahead. Um, so just get to something here, but it's gonna be the same issues as, uh, yesterday. Is the board the same as it was yesterday?
It is, and we have a full board.
Full board, all right. So I mean, it's gonna be the same issues. I don't think these are gonna be a very long hearing. Um, the dealerships, this is they were yesterday. Again, I can answer the question of why we keep going over this, um, year after year, even though the value is the same, again, because we're looking at this on the cost approach. Um, if you could just take my words from yesterday on why we look at things on the cost approach, that's fine with me. Um, it's gonna be duplicate to that in the sense of why it's very hard to find, whether it's income or sales or the differences in sales, et cetera, or what's included. So there's so many issues that there should be the most weight or at least a good portion of weight given to the cost approach on dealership. So it's gonna be the same type of issue on this one, um, us looking at the cost approach. So again, this property, I believe, was built in nineteen ninety-four. So again, if you're looking at the cost approach, it's not a very new property at all. Uh, and if you're looking at the information from the county, if you go to our, our page number three, I believe, you're looking at, uh, the information here as far as the land value at seven eighty-five a square foot and the improvements that it's close to ninety-five dollars a square foot. So obviously we're lower on improvement and we also have some comps on some land value here, which I'll get to in a second. Um, the information on page three continues as far as the square feet of the building. Um, approximately fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen square feet on three point four nine acres of land. And, uh, there's some other information on that, that page that distributes the, the land and the improvement value per square foot for the county, as we mentioned. And if you turn to our main evidence, I mean, we have pictures of the property, we have some maps, et cetera, to get a better idea of the type of improvements at this property. Um, we don't believe much has been done as far as the modeling to this property over the years. So we, on our page number nine, I believe, is our cost approach where we have improvements. Um, and you can see we've broken down as we do. Again, I'm not gonna go over as extensive as I did yesterday. It's the same board. On how we're looking at these, it's straightforward as far as using Marshall Swift. Um, I mean, it's not straightforward as far as, uh, the type of information and how to find in Marshall Swift, but we did provide each page on the cost approach, um, for the improvement, you know, depreciation, um, multipliers, et cetera. And we included some extra features, but those extra features are minimal, especially because it's mainly paving, which only has about a ten to fifteen year life for Marshall Swift. I think we have on our, our page number nine, we do have the improvement asset depreciation, as you can see, at four million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three eighty-one. Again, the county's improvement is, um, about four million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand around it. So we're approximately, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand less on improvement. Um, we do have on our page fifteen, also on the cost approach, some land sales. Um, the full cost, our current of those. As far as, uh, less per square foot in the county, the subject is on the seven eighty-five a square foot, I believe, of land. And we have comps that range from anywhere from two fifty-eight to six forty-three, I believe, um, as far as our land comps. So I'm gonna let the board look at our land comps, decide if they think they're superior to the county. If not, maybe the land value may be the same. I'm not sure if that's the case. And as far as the improvements, we are lower on a cost basis of about seven hundred and fifty thousand, and that completes our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we've, we've, uh, studied all the, uh, these documents and the, the amounts presented. Okay, we'll hear from the assessor now.
So my presentation, as far as land value, would go back to the same thing that we talked about yesterday with the land sales up on Memorial Road. If you want me to go back over those, fine. If you feel comfortable with what we talked about yesterday, we'll leave it at that. We feel very confident in the land sales that were there. Uh, I will say this is that there, there's a note here saying that in twenty twenty-one, the first building of this, of this, uh, parcel was substantially renovated and they added almost ten thousand square feet of building to it. Can we look at AP five and see if there's pictures of that, please?
Yes, sir.
It would. See, is that building one or building two?
That's building one.
Oh, wait a minute. Let's see, are you on twenty forty or are we on twenty fifteen?
We're on twenty fifteen.
I apologize, my apologies.
Yeah, fourteen oh three, nine, two oh one five. Right, if you can scroll back, you should be able to see how much. And apparently, I, I was looking at this and we did not add enough value to this renovation. Keep going back. There should be some showing the construction. Yeah, there was construction back in twenty twenty. That's what it looked like in twenty nineteen, I believe. I thought I had some more pictures of it. I probably do within, uh, maybe in document links or something like that. But anyway, the building was originally sixty-seven, almost sixty-eight hundred square feet. Now it's almost eighteen thousand square feet. Uh, I do want, uh, if I go back and talk about the sales of other, uh, of other complexes or other dealerships, uh, you know, we talk about that there's not that many of those in the county. So the sales that we have are still good to use as, as comparables, as an indication of market value, even though there are differences in, uh, the way they come out on a per square foot basis. And one of the, so there's two points I wanna make about that. One is, is that they rely, agents, consultants, uh, rely on this cost approach quite a bit. I wanna bring out this point that's from the book, The Appraisal of Real Estate. And it talks about the cost approach and this blurb in here says. Here, palm rack, down here, says, "The cost approach is most applicable in valuing new or proposed construction when the improvements represent the highest and best use of land and land value is well supported. Depending on the purpose of the appraisal assignment, the cost approach can be used to develop an opinion of market value or use of special pur, special purpose properties and properties that there are not frequently exchanged in the market." So, yeah, it does have its points, but if you do have sales, those are what's gonna trump it as far, as far as the statutes go. So that's my point on that.
Cause she can outlive that, that value years down the road, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, Mr. Towne made a comment yesterday. He was, he was asking a, a couple of questions regarding, uh, paving and all, but there, and that, and that made me remember this deal right here, is that you have to be cognizant of land and building, uh, size and, and value. Because let's say, for instance, you have a building that's, say, twenty thousand square feet with a land size of, of three hundred and thirty thousand square feet and a paving area of a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Okay? So if you have your total value of seven million dollars, that's about three hundred and thirty-nine dollars per square foot. If you took the same building and you have less land, same amount per square foot, and then you add in less paving because you have less land, you might have a value equitable in there of about five hundred, uh, or five million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, which is gonna break you down to about two hundred and eighty-three dollars a square foot. So it's very important to realize that when you're talking about these types of buildings, especially when there's properties like this where there's multiple buildings on a, on a property, that you look at how that land and building ratio fits together along with the amount of paving, because that can substantially sway that overall value per square foot.
And paving presumes outside?
Yes.
Because you can, some of those buildings, the floor is concrete.
Yes, we're, we're just talking about exterior, exterior parking, you know, for the most part, you know, some, some sidewalk type stuff or whatever. But on something like this, you can see majority of it is that. And I did wanna, uh, again, say is that I had gone through there for equity sake, to make it easier to understand as we're valued these things, that we break down an amount of land and paving per building so that makes it easier to, um, to, uh, measure them against a comparable unit measure, you know? That's what I'm trying to say. You know what I'm trying to say? So I'm trying to allocate an equal amount of, or, uh, an appropriate amount of land and paving to those, to those structures. Okay? So that's all I've got about that. Uh, otherwise, we stand on the sales that have taken place. Uh, again, some that are, uh, right there next to the subject. And again, this property sold a few years ago for almost thirty-four million dollars and we're sitting at currently with renovations, value, uh, land value changes and all, we're sitting at, uh, thirty-five million, seven hundred thousand for the entire complex.
Now, it's, it's sold to Bob Howard or sold to Bob Howard?
Sold to Group One. Group One.
Which is still them, right?
I believe that they lease it, uh, I'm, I'm not sure about, they meant, I, I'm not sure about that. I, I just know that Group One bought it from Bob Howard. But they allow, but they're allowing him, there was probably some kind of deal in there about they're gonna leave his name on there, yes.
So it's not him?
Not, not, I do not believe so.
Because I was gonna ask if you, if, um, if, a lot of times the businesses will reconfigure. So, you know, the corporate will go to an LLC. Is that an arms transaction, Mike? If it's, it's sort of like need to sell something to Mike?
It may or may not be.
We have it as an invalid.
But this.
You have it as an invalid.
Well, that one, right.
We'd like to answer.
Well, the reason why we invalid it.
Well, you get to respond when we finish.
The, the reason why that was invalid is because, as far as we were concerned, is because it's a multiple parcel sale. We can't use it in our ratio studies as a full sale because it was thirty-four million dollars split over eight parcels. So it's valid sale and the fact that it was a sale, but it's invalid for us to use in our ratio studies that we send to the, send to the state.
It's like those guys that are buying fifty houses at a time.
I got you.
Yes.
For a certain amount. We don't know how.
I got you.
Yeah, so we, and, and that's, and that's a good point, is that they did not provide to us a breakdown as to what they felt like each parcel was worth.
Okay.
The whole thing went for thirty-four million dollars. It's up to us to try to allocate out an amount to them.
Okay.
Okay.
And the sale included the name Bob Howard and that's how they retain that now?
That was never divulged to us. All we know is that whenever it was pressed for, was this the correct sale amount, they acquiesced, was that the?
Yeah, and we'd, we'd have to presume that that's the case because they got the Bob Howard name still up there and we know Group One bought all this.
Correct.
Okay.
But if we're using a sales approach, that make any difference?
No, it, it really doesn't. It just, there was a point, uh, Eleanor was making that that's how the name is still there.
And again, going back to what the statute say is that the, the amount of dock stamps to be bought on property is supposed to reflect the land and the buildings only. And some people do a better job of allocating that out than others, so. Uh, I think that's all I have unless you have any other questions for what I just said. I'll be happy.
Any questions for the board?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Tannenbaum, now you can, uh, respond.
Uh, well, a lot of that just kinda proved the fact of how difficult it is to look at these sales. I mean, I don't even know what involved the sales of subject property back then or, or what wasn't involved, how it separated. And then the other issue is, we talked about, I noticed that was the assessor was saying or phrasal as far as, yeah, the price per square foot on these sales varies tremendously for many different reasons. That's our point. A lot of, some might have much larger land than the other. You know, you're not comparing like a, a PetSmart. If I use the cost approach on a PetSmart, I think that would be a problem because they're very similar to other comps as far as even the land size, et cetera. So I think what, what's trying to explain is even more confusing, trying to decipher and figure out sales prices per, per foot versus the subject. And not only that, but we explained that we rarely use the cost approach as our first approach, other than maybe dealerships and funeral homes, because, um, so ninety-five percent of the property type that we have, unfortunately, we use income and market first. But you can't use the cost when it's special purpose. And because these are special purpose because of the issues of trying to figure out sales, what was involved, and using a market approach versus income. Now, if you use the cost approach, which is fair to use, the other point is that when we were talking about paving, and I just got, yesterday's irrelevant in a sense, but we just got a reduction and basically it was all based on less paving value. The Marshall Swift gives ten to fifteen year life only on paving. And unless the paving is redone, which I'm not familiar with on this one, then there really isn't much value on these site improvements or paving for this property or any other dealership, for that matter, or any other property, if you looked at it on the cost approach. So again, we're saying if you give some weight or most weight to the cost approach, then we are lower on improvement, um, but the land's kinda questionable, so let's leave it at that.
Okay, is that it? Mr. Tannenbaum?
Okay, that's all.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE number one fifty-eight. Open up the hearing on BOE one fifty-nine, which is account number ending in two zero four zero. Property is thirteen one twenty Broadway Extension. It's the Bob Howard Chevrolet. Uh, the assessor has assessed this at eight million, forty-seven thousand, two seventy-six, which is the same as last year. And, uh, I've got three numbers here that you're requesting. So tell me what, which number, uh, what are you requesting?
Okay, and this is the property, uh, parcel one four zero three nine two oh four oh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we are requesting six million, one hundred thousand, one sixty.
Okay, there's gotta be one of the figures I've got. All right. Tell us what you wanna know about this property.
I essentially the same type of argument to Bob Howard's Chevrolet. Um, I believe we have the year built at nineteen ninety-four, but we'll get into the effective years and all that in our cost approach. Um, seven point three five acres of land.
How many is?
Seven point three.
Seven, like, seven point three seven?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
So, so I understand that's why if you look at, if you combine that, in a sense, in a sense, getting to what the, the phrasal was saying, it does make sense that per square foot, because it says a little more land building ratio than some other ones, the county would be a little higher on it, one sixty, forty-five per square foot. That is understandable, but we're not looking for a tremendously lower value. We're just saying that just given the land and improvement separately and then together, it should be lower overall. Uh, again, this one, the land value is seven fifty a square foot and, uh, the improvement's a hundred and twelve fifty-eight. For being built that year, that is a high improvement value, I can just tell you that, um, throughout the nation, just in general. And, and we're not talking about location or land value when you're talking improvement. So I know that just in general, that is quite high, um, especially given the year built. But either way, we have, you know, pictures, aerials, side view, current views, et cetera, of the subject property. Uh, number pictures we have. We have a value on page eleven, uh, again, including all the factors we mentioned before. Uh, hold true on this one, uh, separating each area using Marshall Swift. One thing to notice on this one is we do have a newer effective year. So we do know that this one has been remodeled. Um, instead of being built in nineteen ninety-four, we're using numbers and values based off of years two thousand and five to the showroom. We are looking at this as a newer property than when we built. And the office building, auto and service centers adds also year two thousand. So we take those with the type, effective age, et cetera, and get our replacement cost new numbers with multipliers and depreciation and extra features, and even entrepreneurial profit of ten percent. We have a replacement cost news, less appreciation improvement of, I'll give you the rounded number, four million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, keeping in mind that the county accounts for five million, six hundred and forty-six thousand. So again, we're about, uh, one point one million, give or take, less on the improvement if you're looking at this on the cost approach. Again, we apply the Marshall Swift pages to support our improvement value. Then on page nineteen, again, we have our four land sales. Um, again, this property is seven point three five acres. On this subject one, you might wanna look at the size of the subject because most of the value on land is frontage or what you can see from the ground, et cetera, or even from the freeway we're having. But the point is that this is a, a lot bigger piece of land, so it should be valued less per square foot than other smaller, uh, similar lands. Uh, and this one still valued seven fifty. So based on the size of the subject and the comps, whether it's our comps or the phrasal, um, this one could be lower in land value, given economically scale of being much larger in general than, uh, the typical parcels in that area. So just in general, on a lower land and lower improvement value on cost, we're supporting lower value, and that completes our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll hear from the assessor unless the board has any questions?
I don't.
Okay.
Uh, the difference in the land value that we have on these is because this is all really one big complex.
Yeah.
The stuff that, the parcels that front on the Broadway Extension have a seven fifty a foot.
Yeah.
On, on them, the ones that front back on Kelly, I had five dollars a square foot on those. So that's what I was accounting for was the frontage exposure on Broadway Extension, which is substantially more than what's on Kelly. That's the difference in the, uh, that's why there's difference in the land value. Uh, otherwise, you know, going back to the land value, uh, list that I showed you yesterday up, up the street there on Memorial Road and then comparable sales, uh, right here even next to the, the subject. Other than that, I'm not gonna bore you with anything else.
Okay. Any questions for the board or the assessor? Okay. Mr. Tannenbaum, uh, response on this particular piece of property?
Well, um, other than, uh, I still wonder, no, if they're giving five dollars to the certain parts of the land, what are they giving to the, the other parts of the land per square foot to make that an average of seven fifty? And is that value, they're giving a higher value to the other portion of the land, a higher value per square foot than some of the other dealerships?
Well, yeah, that's a question for the.
Well, that's, 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 you know, base, basically we can find on, on comparable sales in the area, you know, and, and our, our best, our best estimate of value.
And you maybe, uh, did a little bit of a disavanting, Mr. Tannenbaum, but this, this property sits right on Broadway Extension and you have to get off and come back and then you're gonna come into all these dealers, uh, particular dealerships. So, uh, you know, the value in this particular location is a whole lot different than the comparables you had on Lincoln Boulevard and Miramar.
Okay.
Yeah, and there on, uh, North I thirty-five Service Road.
Okay, that's fair.
I just wanted you to know that, you know, that's a, uh, a much different, uh, and much more valuable, uh, pieces of property.
This is, is this just a general statement that we're, we're fairly close up in, you know, plus and minus on the values of the buildings? But the contention is land costs. Is that a general statement?
Do you hear that, Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yeah, I mean, we're still lower on improvement, but not as far as some other ones.
Right.
Okay, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything more from the, uh, taxpayer?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Uh, are we done on this one?
Yep.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Oh, yeah, we're done.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna close hearing on BOE number one fifty-nine. I'll open up a hearing on BOE, our number, one sixty, which is account number ending in zero nine zero zero. It's Jim Norton Toyota eighty-four. This is not the right address because they got it on the I thirty-five Service Road and Jim Norton Toyota is out on the Broadway, I mean, uh, the Northwest Expressway. What address do you have for this, Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yeah, we have eight four oh one Northwest Expressway.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, eight four oh one Northwest Expressway. That's, okay, that, I don't know where I got that. Oh, that's what it says on the docket sheet. All right, then doesn't matter. All right, eight four oh one Northwest Expressway. Uh, the assessor has this, if I'm correct, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. Is that correct, assessor?
Yes, this is a parking lot that's adjacent to the main dealership.
Okay.
Seven, say it again, seven.
Taxpayer's asking for four hundred and fifty thousand. Is that right, Mr. Tannenbaum?
Well, it's a little confusing because we've included both parcels, um, together as economic units. So I don't think we need to talk about parcel ending in nine hundred. Um, most of that's land value and I don't think that's gonna be changed, but we like to sit, and so we're really focused on parcel ending in nine one zero.
We are on BOE number one sixty, right?
So, so it looks like we have, we have two different informals from you all. One is on eight four oh one North I thirty-five Service Road, according to your informal protest. We also have one at, coincidentally, eight four oh one Northwest, Northwest Expressway, which is the next one. That's the account number ending in nine ten.
This looks like this is a clarifier error they put.
Yes.
Yeah, but, but he's acting like he's only talking, like he put them together.
Right.
And we have, uh, two different, uh.
Two separate informals.
Two separate informals.
Yeah, and two account numbers.
Over nine ten, we're gonna. Well, is it reserved?
Okay. Yeah, you see where the, the problem arises that on the formal appeal, uh, paperwork, uh, we had an address on I thirty-five Service Road. Uh, and then on, uh, the next one, we've got eight four oh one Northwest Expressway, which you're, you're saying the address is the same on both, right? Mr. Tannenbaum?
Well, yeah, I, I don't know. We put them together, but I'm saying, we're just gonna focus on, you wanna make the ruling on the parcel ending in nine hundred for no change, I understand that. We're just focused on the parcel ending nine ten, but I'm not sure if that's the exact address.
Well, what, wait a minute. So the one you wanna focus on, what was the assessor's value?
Uh, eight million, five hundred thousand.
That's what I thought. And yours is four eight three oh? And what, what is yours?
Our, our value contention on that, one parcel, uh, let me just think here, would be, uh, six million, five hundred thousand.
Okay.
So can I, can I ask a question of the assessor then? If we agree on one sixty at, uh, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine eleven, you all have already backed. you all have already backed that out of BOE number one sixty-three, correct? Where he would be including. You already backed that out of that eight million five hundred thousand?
No, we did not back that out. It's a se, that's a separate parcel, there was a separate.
So you're good with?
We're, we're good with that seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's the land and building, I'm sorry, land and paving.
Right.
Uh, that is just, I know, I know what he's saying, he's thinking of this one economic entity. He wants the eight and a half million dollars for both properties.
Right.
But we have to, you know, we have, we, we have a separate value on this.
Separate your mark.
And, and I'll.
I had to get the numbers straight. The, the, what the eighty-five, the eight, eight and a half million that you guys have versus his six and a half million, what BOE number is that?
That's BOE number one sixty-three.
That's what I thought. And so one sixty is the land only. And what, 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 what is the assessor's value on that one?
Seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine eleven.
And his?
His is four hundred and fifty thousand, he said.
Okay.
Well, this is a separate law, a separate platted area. Uh, if they agree, you know, yeah, if he agrees that that property.
You're right.
Would be, could be valued at seven hundred and sixty-eight nine eleven, and we could do this by mutual consent.
For BOE number one?
Sixty.
BOE one sixty, this is the account number ending in oh nine hundred. Mr. Tanenbaum, is there an agreement that, uh, from your standpoint of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars?
Well, I'd, I'd like the board to make a no change decision as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can do that.
But, okay, so we, we're, we're going to go back to, to one sixty-three, right?
Close one sixteen, go to one sixty.
Well, yeah, we're gonna, uh, you don't have anything else to offer on, uh, BOE one sixty, which is account number oh nine hundred?
Uh, I have nothing else from him.
Okay, we're closed.
All right. And we're going to close the hearing on BOE one sixty, open up the hearing on BOE one sixty-three, which is the same address, uh, eight four oh one Northwest Expressway. And, uh, I believe this is going to be the building.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, does it include the parking lot?
It does include the parking lot too. He will bring, he will bring that, he will bring that up too.
All right.
For you to see them.
And what, what is the assessor's value on this property?
Twenty twenty-one.
Eight and a half million. Eight million five hundred thousand.
That one right there. Now, go, click on that.
Assessor, it's eight point five million on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Tanenbaum, what, what are you asking us to give, uh, to assess it on BOE one sixty-three?
Six million five hundred thousand.
Okay. So we're exactly two million dollars apart, all right. tell us what you want us to know about it.
Okay, um, so it's the same situation as before. Um, put these parcels together, so it's going to be slightly confusing, but, uh, since I believe the, the value of this parcel is the same prior year. Um, so you'll notice we have an aerial of both parcels, but we're mainly just focused right now on, right, parcel nine ten, which is given in one of our aerials there. The bottom line is, again, we're looking at this on cost. I'll leave it up to the board, how they, how much weight they want to give the cost approach versus the other approaches for dealerships. So our main evidence is on page eight. On page eight, again, as we've done before, some of these areas have a newer effective year. They have been remodeled somewhat since the original year built in two thousand and four. Um, for example, the showroom gets most of the upkeep and remodel. That's why we have an effective year two thousand and ten. Either way, we use Marshall Swift on a C average basis, um, with depreciation, multipliers, et cetera, as we've explained on other properties. We've given a lot of extra features on this one, half a million. I don't think that's warranted, but that's what we've given. On rental profit, even with all that, and on rental profit ten percent, we're giving a value improvement after depreciation of four million three hundred and fifteen thousand, that's rounded. The county's improvement value, unless I'm, unless I'm a little bit off, it's far higher than that. Um, I believe, let me just calculate it because I don't want to include the improvements of the other parcel, about two hundred thousand off. So they're at approximately rounded, I try to give you the exact number, about six point seven million. So on this one, they are far higher on improvement on the cost basis. Um, there is a hundred and forty-three dollars approximately on improvement, where we've had dealerships where they've been in the mid-nineties per square foot, or a hundred and teneth, uh, per square foot. And again, this is a dealership, yes, it's been somewhat remodeled, but we've given newer effective years, and it was originally built two thousand and four. So if you're going to look at any property with some weight on the cost or the updated, uh, any weight given, this would seem to be the one that would deserve the most recognition as far as the lower value overall on the cost approach. Again, we are well over two million less, uh, for all of the improvements. And that takes into account, it tends to show rental profit, which I don't think should be there. Five hundred thousand extra features, which I don't think should be there. It takes all that into account, all the areas broken down on our page eight, we're still, uh, well lower than, you know, more than probably, uh, about two and a half million, maybe lower. Uh, two point three million lower on improvement. So all we can do is apply the information on the Marshall Swift pages and how we got our improvement value. Um, again, on our page, just so you have some reference, we do have some nearby land sales, um, on the separate issue of the cost approach that might support a lower land value on our page seventeen. We have four land sales, again, um, this property is eleven point four two acres. So a lot of this land value would be excess land, in a sense, not seen visibility of sellers, so it should be lower in value. I understand that the value per square foot is four sixty-six, which is somewhat lower. Um, maybe they do take that into account. But either way, we still have some land sales that support less. And I think overall, you'll find that with our land sales and the county's land sales, even if you can't adjust the land value, um, you do definitely believe you can adjust the improvement value. So therefore, there would be an overall lower cost value, an overall lower value. And the county's value, which is eight point five million, um, this overall, keeping in mind this property is, the total square feet is forty-eight thousand four ninety. So we're talking about, they're saying that the value is eight point five million for a dealership that the building's only forty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety per feet. So you see where price can get a little carried away regardless of the situation, depending on how you're looking at these properties. So hopefully, you'll take cost into account at least somewhat, or give it most weight, and therefore would be a lower value. But that's all we have.
Okay. Assessors, any questions, taxpayer from the board?
Are all your comps in Oklahoma County?
The land sales?
Yeah.
I believe so.
Okay, just asking here.
You're ready?
All right, uh, we'll hear from the assessor.
do y'all have a copy of the sale questionnaire that was returned by the building owner? This is, should be in all your documentation.
Okay, if it was in the, uh, material, yeah, we've got it. Uh, let me, let me take a look at that.
And this was presented at the informal hearing?
This was at the.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I, uh, yeah.
Yes, nine sixty-one.
You got it?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have it in this account?
Yes, he's got no on all of them.
I got it pulled up for you. Okay. Michael's been able to get that up.
Yes.
Okay. So it is up on the, on the screen now, he was able to, to pull it up. From what we can tell, this, according to what's in the system, that eight and a half million dollars was just for the parcel on which the building is, is sitting on.
Right.
Okay, so my documentation's based on, on just that building alone. I've, I've separated that other part out. So my value for the dealership part, which is, uh, the two hundred and ninety-six thousand square feet of land and about the forty-eight thousand five hundred square feet of building.
Right.
This base, you know, on the sale, which they supplied back to us. There's a couple things I want to point out on this. Is if you go down there towards the bottom, and remember, this is the state form that we have to send out. It says, do you consider the total sale price to be market value of the real estate? They circled yes down there on that. And they, total sale price, eight and a half million dollars. But what's really interesting in this thing is that this is actually rented out for seventy-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per month. So that's nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars per year is what the lease is on this thing. So again, he's right in that, a lot of times we don't get all this information, but sometimes we do. And if we didn't have this thing on for eight and a half million dollars, OTC would be on me. Now, why not if you got a sale letter telling you that? So I have.
What was the date of the sale?
The, the date of the sale was, uh, January the twenty-one.
Okay.
And so, I mean, that's, it, and that amount of a hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot still fits in the range of other sales that I've presented on my list. Anywhere from a, a low of a hundred and thirty dollars a square foot up to three hundred and thirty-nine dollars a square foot. So this one fits well within the range of those things. So, uh, I don't have anything else other to say than I've got a sale of the property.
Okay. Uh, any response?
And not raised, and not raised in two years.
I, I don't really know that information, to be honest, so I don't really have a response on that.
You, you don't have a copy of that?
I don't have the copy of some information. I mean, I don't know about the sale and what happened, and at least, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I bet it would have been sent with it.
Anything else, Mr. Tanenbaum?
No, we have none.
Okay. I'm going to close the hearing on BOE number one sixty-three. Uh, thank you, Mr. Tanenbaum, for your input. You gave us a lot to think about. Uh, we will meet tomorrow, I believe, and, uh, decide what we think the market value of the property is, or we'll send a letter out to that effect, okay?
Sounds fair, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, bye.
Okay.
Are we dispossessed?
See no citizens?
I mean, double say, yes.
So he doesn't have that?
He should have that because it was all emailed back. And even so, it's his client.
It's his client, yeah. And this, that's always kind of background, you know, little information.
Well, he didn't allege he didn't have it. He just said he didn't know whether he had it or not.
I thought he said he didn't have it. No, he didn't have it, I don't remember about that.
Okay, well, uh, but it was.
Fine. It says, but, but that's, you didn't generate that information, right?
I'm sorry, you requested.
You requested, and they sent it to you.
Yes, the, the tax commission requires us to mail, uh, letters out on all commercial properties.
Yes.
We only get about, we only get back about thirty percent of them.
Right, but you got that one back.
We did get that one back. You know, and the, and the tax commission also sends out sale questionnaires to all commercial sales. But you know, the sad thing about this, they don't share us, share to us what they get.
What they get.
Yes, yes. But they want us to be able to prove that we sent all of our letters out.
But tomorrow's our decision day?
Yes, that's correct.
That's why I, I freaked last night when I was doing this, and I saw the agenda, and I thought, holy cow, look how many we got to send through. I said, man, I always send, we couldn't send through that many. But, but I was thinking it was a.
It was a hearing.
It was a hearing thing.
She's not saying right now.
That, that must have been why you thought, yeah. We only have one more Friday decision day, that'll be next week. Although those are Thursdays.
Yeah. So we're meeting every day, sending my email.
Uh, except for Wednesday.
Quick thinking.
So we're meeting, yes. Well, and, yeah, so we're meeting Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and then decision day will be Friday, and that'll be our last Friday decision day.
Okay, and a Wednesday next week.
No Wednesday. Get a break from all these.
But Tuesday, we have a tax side meeting.
Uh, Tuesday the thirteenth, is that next Tuesday? That's correct, yes, uh-huh, yep.
Steve, thanks for your last night.
Storff, S-T-O-R-F-F.
She thought it was stork.
Yeah, I get, I get, I got that a lot, yeah.
Not to be confused with Steve Stout either. Steve Storff, Steve Stout, that, that tripped me up when I started hearing.
Yeah, that was.
I'm just teasing.
Okay, we do need to adjourn still.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I need to adjourn.
Same.
All in favor, aye. All right. Thank you.